Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the regular meeting of the Mayor and Council of the Borough of Englewood Cliffs, New Jersey. Today is November 8th, 2018. It is 8:35 PM. I apologize we're starting late. Our closed session in the caucus meeting went a little extra long. We had a lot of work to do. Madam Clerk, may I please have the roll call?
Mayor Krajac?
Here.
Councilperson Deversa?
Here.
Eve Park?
Here.
O here.
O'Shea?
Here.
M Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Here.
Borough Attorney?
Present.
Borough Administrator?
Here.
Public Works Superintendent?
Yes.
And Borough Clerk? Everyone is present.
Thank you. Please all rise for the flag salute and remain standing after.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and the
I'd like to have a moment of silence for the 13 victims of the Ventura County shooting last night, especially Ventura County Sheriff Ron Hollis. Also, a moment of silence for Tree of Life Synagogue shooting victims in Pittsburgh. And also, a moment of silence for the North Ogden, Utah Mayor Brett Taylor. He died in the service of the US military in Afghanistan. And if anyone else wishes to add anybody, please do so. Thank you. I just want to remind everyone that we're having a Veterans Day observance on Sunday, November 11th at 11:00 AM at Veterans and Fallen Heroes Park on West Bogey Avenue. This marks the 100th anniversary of the end of World War I, which claimed 20 million lives. That started on July 28, 2014. So, we wanted to do it on Sunday, hoping that more people could join us and that children could also join. So, please come. Tomorrow is the Marine Corps Birthday, so any Marine Corps veterans here, and others who are in the Police Department, I wish you a happy 243rd birthday. The Marine Corps was actually founded in a tavern in Philadelphia in 1775. Madam Clerk, would you please read into the record the Open Public Meetings Act statement?
Adequate notice of this meeting was given to the press and posted as required. Date and time of this meeting was legally given as required by the Open Public Meetings Act. This notice is unfilled with the municipal clerk and posted on the bulletin board. Minutes of this meeting will be made available to the public upon the completion of typing and proofreading by the municipal.
Thank you for that. Just want to remind everyone also that our Borough Charity Project, the Office of Concern Food Pantry Collection, is taking place out in the foyer. We do this before, during, and after every regular meeting, so if you can, please donate some non-perishable food items. People ask me why I do this. It's because we have to help people who are less fortunate than us. And also, I want to feel like we actually accomplish something at these meetings that's tangible and noble and helps other people despite all the problems that we may encounter here in our meeting. So, join me, please, in doing that. We have correspondents. The Superintendent of Schools of Englewood Cliffs, Jennifer Brewer, Dr. Jennifer Brewer now. If you see her, congratulate her. She just got her PhD, actually. Big shout-out to Jennifer. I think that's great. She had approached me back in August about meeting with the Board of Education regarding school safety. Chief Chaffee and I attended that meeting on September 5th. Different school safety scenarios were presented to us then, and their Board wanted to have more of an opportunity to consider, you know, armed guards versus non-armed guards, Police Department, non-Polic Department. Chief Chaffee and I, who don't agree on a lot of things, actually agreed on the fact that if you're going to have armed guards, they should be part of the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. Anyone carrying a gun in this borough for law enforcement should be part of that Police Department. And then, the issue is how do you do that? And we received a public statement that was read at the Board of Education meeting. I guess it was the last meeting they had, either last week or earlier this week, basically saying that they want to have armed School Resource Officers. I think there's a way to do it. We need to hire police officers in town, which we're doing, despite what, you know, you may have read in the campaign materials, we are actually doing that. We envisioned something along these lines, and it's just kind of early on. I just want the council members to think about this, because you're going to have to be voting in the future on this. One armed police officer at each school. All officers will be trained in School Resource Officer duties, or rotate them through in non-school days, and when school's out, they'll join the regular patrol. So, I think that will accomplish everyone's goals. The finances, of course, haven't been worked out. You know what I want to do, and you know what the Board of Ed wants to do, so what we'll want to do, because they haven't actually presented anything yet, we'll be talking to them about it and find some fair formula that deals with the finances. There's a letter from Eric &amp; Bernstein &amp; Associates, LLC. It's privileged and confidential, so that's not here. By the way, the school superintendent's statement, I think, is on their website if you want to see it. In any event, a Borough Clerk has a copy if you want to get it from her. I'd also add, I go a lot of mail, and a lot of it is, not surprisingly, hate mail. If you don't sign it, I'm not going to read it. So, if you want to hate me in writing, sign your name to it, and at least let me know who you are. It's fine. Just tell me what you feel. That's all about our democracy, is I don't care what you say to me. If you have a view, sign your name to it, if you're really feeling that comfortable about what you're saying. It's fine. You know, we encourage people to come up here and say things, and sometimes it's hurtful, but, you know, I do listen. But if you're not going to sign your name, then there's no point reading it. It goes right in the garbage. Don't even bother opening it. Before we go to new business, before we go into the public portion, I just want to tell you what we did in the new business in the caucus, so that you know what we discussed, okay? So, I'm going back to the caucus agenda. I'm going to run through number one. We're selecting a date for a special meeting for the end of November. It'll be November 28th at 8:00 PM, subject to availability of Lieutenant Hill, who is now the officer in charge. I wanted him to have an opportunity to sit in closed session with our council to just tell them more about himself and his views of how the Police Department should be managed. I think he's done a phenomenal job since October 11th. He's lifted morale, and he's also reinstated a very strong sense of professionalism and discipline in the Police Department, so I'm very proud of him for doing that in such adverse circumstances.
And Mayor, I just need to observe that in that closed session, should that closed session occur, it's also for the purpose of contract negotiation, because the OIC is serving the title of which he's not receiving his salary. So, that needs to be addressed by the Mayor and Council with a resolution at some point.
The second new business item, and thank you for that, Emily. The second new business item was discussion of creation of ad hoc committee for affordable We have an affordable housing trial coming up at the end of January. There's a lot of work to be done, and I think that there are people in this audience and on this dais that could be helpful to the process. So, I would want to create an ad hoc committee comprised of Gloria O., Ellen Park, Russell Perino, Carol McMorro, and Jamie Barberio. And I'm an ex-official member. The next thing on the agenda is what I call Witty Field Repairs and Renovations. I met recently with the Little League Board. There are some safety issues regarding their infield, which would take about $15,000 to $20,000 to correct. I'm supportive of that. We just need to properly vet out what needs to be done there. Then, if you want to look at this in stages, I want to do the renovation of the park. We have the worst park facilities, I think, in most of New Jersey at this point, let alone Bergen County, because it's just not workable, the way that park is. So, I want to go back to the plan that Mazur did. We'll modify it to satisfy everyone as best as we can, renovating it with bi-alarge natural grass fields is what I think we'll do. But we should have at least one segment for turf fields, so at least if it rains, people can still have their children playing some type of activity on a turf field. That drains much better. I'd like to have a bandshell, pavilions, and yes, lights as well. Traffic issues. Well, next up with school safety, I already discussed that earlier on the correspondence section. Traffic issues is number five. The residents of Van Oostren are very concerned about the LG building and the impact on traffic. I had discussed this earlier with LG and our engineering firm, that we would somehow grant them access to Turn North onto 9W from Van Oostren by having bollards installed that retract and go back up once they pass, if you're a resident or an emergency vehicle. Making a left from Van Oostren onto Hudson Terrace is virtually impossible. It will become even more impossible once LG's building is online. So, we're working on taking care of that problem. And I've seen it done in other communities where residents have special basic garage door openers that let the bollards go up and down as they pass through. No one else can go. Also, Jamie's been reaching out to the Palatine Interstate Park Commission regarding an additional on-ramp onto 9W up by CNBC to alleviate that morning traffic that we all seem to hit. And it'll only get worse once LG's there and the brownstone opens. So, anyone who's not really stopping in town can just jump on the parkway there and not have to wait at the light. So, I think that'll make everyone much happier. Six and seven are self-explanatory, and then there was an eighth item, which was a notation regarding best practices for inventory. Emily, do you want to add anything?
Our best practices inventory will be considered by the Mayor and Council in December regular meeting of the Mayor and Council.
Okay, thank you. So, now, I'd like to open to the public, have a motion to do so.
Second?
Fall in favor.
Aye.
Okay. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard, please raise your hand. Let me recognize you. Come up to the microphone at its desk, state your name and address, and tell us what you
Lauren Eastwood, Four Willow Drive. Councilwoman Deversa, at the October 23rd special meeting, you said that the charges against Chief Chaffee have been dismissed. I've been at every council meeting, and I don't remember the council taking that action. It's not on the Borough's videotape either. When exactly did the council vote to dismiss the charges against Chief Chaffee? The three of them all abstained because the charges were dismissed. I would like an answer.
They don't have to answer you, and you could infer whatever you want from their silence.
What I'm inferring is that something very improper was done. And for people who are campaigning on reducing litigation, that's certainly not the way to go. At the October 10th regular meeting, Sergeant Totten spoke on behalf of the PBA. Sergeant Totten expressed no contrition, no remorse, and offered no apology. Is this amusing, Councilman O? Instead, all Sergeant Totten was concerned about was ensuring that the PBA members avoid any consequences for their bad behavior. I believe that Englewood Cliffs currently has a Police Department that thinks racism is acceptable, that sexually explicit discussions are acceptable in the workplace, and most disturbingly, that its members are above the law and can do whatever they want without repercussion. Englewood Cliffs needs a Police Department that understands that its members must separate their police responsibility from their politics. I don't think the Englewood Cliffs Police Department, especially its chief and captains, is willing or capable of doing so. The New Jersey Attorney General's Internal Affairs Policies and Procedures requirement five states. The agency must notify complainants of the outcome of the investigation. A letter shall be sent to the complainant explaining the outcome of the investigation. If the allegation was unfounded or the officer was exonerated, this conclusion shall be stated and defined for the civilian complainant. If the allegation was not sustained, the letter shall provide the complainant with a brief explanation why the complaint was not sustained, e.g., insufficient proof, lack of witnesses, et cetera. If the allegation was sustained and discipline was imposed, the letter shall simply state that the allegation was sustained and that the officer has been disciplined according to department procedures. Compliance with that requirement makes it impossible for Police Departments to ignore citizen complaints. However, in the past year, I've made two complaints to the Englewood Cliffs Police Department. The first, on November 9th, 2017, concerned an officer's apparently unauthorized access to and disclosure of another officer's medical information, an action which exposed Englewood Cliffs taxpayers to substantial liability. The second, on May 2nd, 2018, concerned an email sent by the EC Police Department, quote-unquote, the day before last year's election endorsing Ed Deversa and Gloria O. To date, a year after the first complaint and six months after the second complaint was filed, I have not been advised of the outcome of either complaint. Finally, Chief Chaffee was deposed on July 24th, 2018. In his deposition, which I downloaded from Pacer, which is accessible to anyone who signs up, Chief Chaffee testified that there are five officers assigned to Internal Affairs: Captain Regan, Captain Murphy, Lieutenant Henkelman, Lieutenant McDermott, and Sergeant Totten. With five officers in Internal Affairs, I don't understand why I don't have an answer to a complaint a year after it was filed, particularly since I gave them all the documents. Finally, and this is the most disturbing part, in this deposition, Chief Chaffee took the Fifth Amendment 12 times. I do not believe it is appropriate for a police officer to remain on duty and on the public payroll if they have done things which they feel they cannot answer questions about for fear of ending up in jail. And I think it is time that Chief Chaffee be fired so that the taxpayers are not paying his salary.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Dave DiGregorio, 165, Charlotte Place. I would like to encourage the council to begin to bury the hatchet. Drop all charges against anyone they have charges against. And I would encourage everyone in town to a new beginning, where we have none of this litigation. We were called the litigation capital of New Jersey. I think everyone needs to look deeply inside themselves, be the bigger person, and drop it, and concentrate on other things that can help our community. It's enough of this very costly infighting. It's enough of those very bad feelings that are hurting people. And I honestly feel that the entire council should turn the page to a new beginning. It's for efficiency, it's for goodwill, and it's the right thing to do. All of this has been gnawing at people, probably making people physically sick, and I don't think it's healthy for anybody, anybody, on either side. So, I implore everyone to just stop and start again in a positive way. Thank you.
Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Carol McMorro, 49 Summit Street. I'm glad Mr. DiGregorio went before I did, and just want to let you know that the Mayor and I got sued again by Chief Chaffee, and it was sent to us on November 5th. I would assume Mr. DiGregorio's comments also go to members of the Democratic Party. The most interesting part here is that only the Mayor and I, well, Councilman Consalvo, only Republicans were sued, Councilman Consalvo, Councilman Park, myself, and the Mayor. I was sued for retaliation because I played tapes at a public meeting that were public at the time that I was allowed to play, where I was the victim, yet I harassed the chief because I told the truth about sexual harassment, and I told the truth about racist comments, and I told the truth that he threatened my life. Yet, I harassed him. That's on number 88. On number 91, he's suing me, even though I resigned on October 1st, that on October 10th, even though Councilman Deversa is the one that made certain motions, that he was placed on administrative leave without pay. I can't understand how I could be sued for something that I wasn't even on the council for, and I didn't even make the motion. But let's just sue Republicans and, you know, not the Democrats that actually made the motions. I just find that very ironic. Obviously, this is a frivolous lawsuit. Again, I have no doubt in my mind it's going to be dismissed against me, again, as the first two were, and I'm sure the judge is not going to be happy with Chief Chaffee's lawyer, or Chief Chaffee, when she reads this garbage. That's number one. Okay. Number two. I wanted to bring to everyone's attention, this came in the mail, and it came from, if the video can see it, it came from Councilwoman O., Councilwoman Park, and Councilwoman Deversa. It's a nice, long letter, but the most interesting part was this paper that came with it, which is an Excel spreadsheet of this, God knows where this number came from, of $1.8 million, costing us 10% of the budget. But when I saw this, I kept looking at it, saying, "I know I saw this from somewhere," and I couldn't remember it. There was also another version of this Excel chart, and that was given to me that looked like this. So, this is vertical, and this is horizontal. All of a sudden, it dawned on me where I saw these charts. I can tell you where I saw these charts. I saw these charts from a document that was prepared by the Borough Clerk, Ms. Duffy, given to Ellen Park, and here is the email. It's dated June 11th. It was a request, this was given as a request under a council person. And I'll show you the chart, okay? You can see the chart, and it's the same chart as
Excuse me one second. I'll just caution, even though you're not a council member, if you receive that as a council member, it's a confidentiality thing.
I made my own spreadsheet, but
No, 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 I'm not talking
You can't share that
All I'm saying, all I'm saying
You can't see what's on it. I'm just showing you that it's a vertical document
You put it on the video.
Order, please.
Uh, excuse me, but they sent it to the entire town. I'm bringing it to your attention that Councilwoman Deversa, Councilwoman O., and Councilwoman Park sent out confidential information that she received to the entire town. What I want to also show you is that this document that looks like this in a horizontal manner was also printed and prepared the first time by the Borough Clerk this way. So, what a coincidence. We have two documents, one horizontal, the second one was vertical, both prepared by the clerk, then requested by Ellen Park, then it goes out to the town, and wow, what a surprise. They embellish it. They embellish it to make it look like we have all these lawsuits that we don't really have. They list the same lawsuit three to four times, over and over. They list lawsuits, the Michael McMorro versus James Tracy. I don't, I hate to, like, remind you guys, it was filed in 2000, look at the three of them, don't even pick their head up to pay attention to what anybody is saying. It's outrageous. Then you want to know why they send information out, and they violate their fiduciary duties. The Michael McMorro lawsuit versus James Tracy, that's a personal lawsuit, guys. It's a personal lawsuit. It's for defamation. Shouldn't be on the list. Excuse me. Stop yelling out. I think it's outrageous that sitting council members embellish lists of lawsuits for political gains to make a certain party look bad. And quite frankly, I think you violated your code of ethics, and I will be calling the DCA on all three of you. That's the second. And if your campaign had to do with it, then I guess that that will be looked into, because you ran on integrity, and you two have law licenses. I think you should be careful in how you act in letting confidential information out. That's number two. Number three. These beautiful brochures that you put out about 870, about the 52-unit complex, five-story, enabled, new plan for five-story 52-unit, enabled. Enabled means that we helped them. We never helped anyone. These flyers that you put together are filled with lies. What is so funny, Ellen?
I just think of the arrow in my head that keeps following me everywhere, so that's why I'm laughing.
Okay. Well, you know what? You can respond afterwards. Please don't be rude to me, okay?
Yeah, okay.
Okay.
All right.
We did not support...
Folks, can you just stop discussing things back there? If you have to have a conversation, just go outside. No one cares. Come back when you're done.
Okay. So we have a discussion here about a 52-unit apartment complex. Then we have a statement stating, and by the way, this is the Sabari and Song campaign literature. Then we have a statement that we ordered that any new construction on five or more units include affordable housing. Ellen, Gloria, and Ed, you all know why the set aside ordinance was asked for. For you to misrepresent facts to the public, critical facts that were necessary to be dealt with for our litigation for your own personal self-serving goals is outrageous. I cannot understand how you will stoop to any level to just win an election when we are facing one of the biggest litigations ever before in this town with 877. Why would you compromise anything having to do with our strategies to win a campaign? Councilman Inversa, you have an answer for that? Councilwoman Park, do you have an answer for that? Okay, no answer. I just want to remind all of you that on January 22nd, we're going into court. And the gentleman in the back, from Beatty Potavano, is watching everything that you guys do. And anything that you do could harm this borough if it divulges information for our strategy, if it misrepresents facts to the public that they can then go to a judge and use against us. This is a really serious matter. This should not be Republican and Democrat. We should be a unified town on this matter. And Deborah Sabari and Jimmy Song are just as guilty as the three of you. Because they approved this, whether they saw it or they didn't see it, you know, that's for them to state later. Their name's on it. And if something goes on, goes wrong with that litigation, the five of you will be held responsible for playing politics with the most serious matter facing this town. Okay? I encourage everybody on the, and by the way, this separation here with the two sides of the room, this is pathetic. Pathetic, that people can't sit on either side with each other. We're one town. This has got to stop, okay? People need to be nice to each other. Enough is enough. Stop laughing at me.
You want to say that right after you just attacked us?
But I'm talking to you. Listen to me.
You know, the election is over.
Please don't attack the residents.
This meeting is not about you showing off your political pieces.
Because you hurt us, Councilwoman O.
What about you? You call me a racist. I am not a racist, okay?
That is not what I said. And don't take any of that out of my mouth.
Are you done now? Are you done? Are you done now?
All right, please stop. Stop yelling at the resident.
Stop being political.
Councilwoman O, stop yelling at the resident.
You're really rude, Gloria.
What about you?
Councilwoman O, stop yelling at the resident.
You're yelling at me, and you always yell at me.
Everybody knows she's not just a resident. Everybody knows in town, seriously.
There's no distinction.
Now, you want to be on the ad hoc committee?
Enough. I'm not a resident.
Enough. She's a resident. You have to respect residents when they come here.
Absolutely. Everybody, who's there?
The other thing I could say is...
Well, this campaign, this campaign literature...
Campaign's done. Go sit down.
Excuse me, Ms. McMorrow. We have fire code...
You will not talk to me that way.
Preventing her from standing there, sir. Can you please sit down? Thank you.
Your two candidates are sitting in the audience. And I know you're watching how she's speaking to me. I encourage you to watch the caucus meeting when this started. I will talk. I encourage the members of the council to watch the caucus meeting when it started at 6:30. It was an embarrassment how Councilwoman O., Councilwoman Park, and Councilman Inversa were screaming and yelling about the subject matter of me. I encourage you to watch it and make your own decisions of how people spoke. I am extending my hand again and asking you to stop attacking me. Continue a little bit. There we go. This is funny.
Ms. Fair.
It's funny because you attack me.
No, I'm trying to help you. I'm asking you to stop playing politics. How does it work, okay?
Can you finish up, Ms. McMorrow?
I'm trying.
Councilwoman Park, oh, please stop yelling, please.
You know what? She's attacking.
Stop yelling. She's not attacking you.
She's saying, "O., Park, and Inversa." Every time, "O., Park, and Inversa."
Yeah, but get used to it.
She wants to work together.
Okay, all right. That's just the way it is. That's democracy, okay? The residents get to say whatever they want. Go ahead.
Excuse me, I was respectful to you, Gloria.
Oh, really?
Yes, I was.
You called me a racist? You were being respectful?
When did I call you a racist, Gloria?
You're making that up.
I think you condoned the behavior...
No, you called me a racist.
I'm not going to argue with you, okay? I'm not.
Okay, all right.
I'm asking you to please...
All right.
This is crazy.
Gavel is too small.
You guys, how you speak to residents...
You guys? We're not you guys up here.
You told me to stop speaking. You just told me.
All right, just, are you finished?
Am I finished?
If you're not finished, go ahead, but finish it.
This is disrespectful, all of you. All of you. You need to grow up and stop. You are an embarrassment. My kids watch these videos, and they're saying the same thing.
I don't condone...
You know what, Mayor? It's ridiculous what goes on here. You are an embarrassment to this town, an embarrassment. The whole town, the whole state of New Jersey is talking about you.
That's exactly true. Because you stood up.
Because of the three of you.
Okay, please stop yelling at the resident. Thank you. Please. Folks, on the dais, everybody, you may not like what the residents have to say about you or about something you believe in, but you have to sit here and take it, okay?
Because you're sitting on that side, Kevin.
All right, from now on, I want every other seat, Republican and Democrat, out here, okay? From now on, all right? You're not allowed to sit together anymore. Mix it up. Mix it up. Why don't you mix it up right now, okay? Back row, come to the front. I'm not telling you where to sit. It was, yeah, we got one person moving over, okay? All right, let's go. Anybody else? Mr. Luciano, is your hand up? Usually have good things to say, though. Yeah, come on, we got the crosswalk, we got the gate.
Switch through.
All right. Come on up. I miss hearing from you.
I'm sorry, no. First, Glenn Luciano, 20 Lorrie Drive. Sage Road had a big tractor on the side of the road. I don't know why for the past three days, so I'll start off with that. Maybe this gentleman can look into it. I don't know why there's a case bucket loader sitting on the side of the road with a campaign sign, used to go.
DPW?
I don't know who's, no, it's actually some contractor, but I'm just curious why it sits there.
Okay, can you look into that? There's also a pickup truck on Floyd on one of the properties there.
I do, it's the machine that's...
Come on, guys.
The contractor that's working on 9W is paving 9W.
Oh, okay. Well, I think they need to leave it there at night, right? They need to leave it somewhere, then it's probably better than leaving it on 9W.
I think it moved it all today, but okay. It's been working.
That was a nice day out.
It looks like crap. Also, I came here, I don't know, maybe two years ago, a year and a half ago. The guardrail you pull on Sage Road, I don't know who's responsible for it. If it's DOT, contact DOT. It looks like crap.
It's a stay rug, it's peeled back, somebody hit it.
It's been peeled back for almost two years. I know I raised the question over a year ago. If we're not responsible for it, you guys can help us and call DOT and have them fix it. It looks like crap. That block looks like crap anyway.
Northwest corner of Sage and 9W has a guardrail that's peeled back.
Also, I'm glad whoever, I think it's because they haven't got their CO, but they cleaned up the curb strip on Sage Road on the one side. Unfortunately, they blew all the crap into the yard. So, I mean, I like that they did something, but the, and that's wetlands, too, technically.
So they half-listened to me.
They half-listened to you. Maybe like everybody else, but the, in reality, blowing the stuff into the wetlands, for one, is a violation, and two, clean it up. And they did move a lot of crap out of there and put it back on Johnson Ave. So, and while I'm on Johnson Ave, next one, someone's got to ask LG, I mentioned this over a year ago, too, in the back, the weeds are growing over Johnson Ave. I know I've mentioned it to you before. Something needs to be done. And I know it's kind of a slow end of the block, but come on. And I'd like to have bollards on Sage Road, to be honest with you.
The stage?
Because, you know what?
I don't think that's possible.
In Van Ostrand, I understand that dilemma, but I probably, we have more people cutting through from Anglerwood to CNBC and all the LG. We probably have, take a survey. We probably have more traffic.
No, I see it. I see it in the morning when I run.
And so I think if, and if we're going to, if you want to do an added assessment for bollards to do that, I'm all for it. But I want, we're going to pay for bollards on one road. You better get ready, I'm going to come here every month and say I want bollards on.
Well, LG promised me they would pay for it.
Well, if they're going to pay for it, go walk out of there. But, so...
You know, there's a distinct difference between the people who live on Van Ostrand, who are pinned in there, can't make a left out of there.
Yeah, but they knew that when they bought the place.
Well, they did.
They knew when they bought the place. I don't know how they ever got, and I don't mean to cut you off, but I don't know how they ever got the road to be blocked off, to be honest with you.
I, before my time, I don't know.
I know it is, but since we're talking about it, I don't understand how that road got blocked off. And now we're going to take the gate out and put in bollards? I can't imagine the thousands of dollars for automatic bollards to go in the road. You know, either add an assessment or go walk out.
No, 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 no. I said LG's doing it, okay? Let's get the story straight. I'm not doing it, we're not doing it, okay?
And I wanted, I was just going to say, with all due respect, I think that the way you're going to, to you, Mr. Mayor, the way that we're, I don't understand, and you might have heard my comment, I don't understand why we're talking about political literature. If you want, if you want these meetings to go better, you should not allow, and okay, I'm a resident, I shouldn't attack anybody personally on the desk. And you should prevent that as the mayor.
Well, it's usually me that's being attacked, but...
But then, you know what? Set a policy that you don't allow anybody...
We can't do that. We can't do that.
Yes, you can.
No, we can't.
Oh, I see it in many different...
That's not my, that's not my style.
That's different. Don't say a half a ton.
First Amendment, right of free speech, you know.
But then, you know what, Mr. Mayor, with all due respect, then you have to allow the council members to respond as well.
No.
If I'm doing, well...
Well, they have to be respectful.
Let me finish, please. My own opinion, okay? If you want it to get better, you don't allow, first off, I don't see what the good or better meant of government taking place, like I came here and said things that are happening with, you know, beautify the neighborhood. I don't know what political literature to me is like, part fiction, part reality. Let's be honest, it's political literature. We shouldn't have an open dialogue in a government meeting about political literature. If we want to argue in the hall about political literature, that's where it belongs, not necessarily here to attack someone or something or some form of organization because you didn't agree with what was said. And I mean it, and don't take it as one side or the other. I'm saying for everybody.
Her discussion was about affordable housing, okay? And quite frankly, I'm fine with people coming here and saying whatever's on their mind, and a lot of times it's very wrong, it's hurtful, but we have to let people do this because they have 42 years of not doing this, okay? So I let it happen. People before me were very intimidated. They didn't come up and sit down where you are there and say, hey, Mayor, you're wrong, you're right, you behave like Saddam Hussein. I had everything, okay? Even worse. People have come up there, right? It's just the way it is. This is America. You know, other parts of the world do limit people. They limit speech.
Well, Mr. Mayor, I'll be honest, I've seen you, I've seen this body before, be strict about a five-minute limit. And I've also seen other people speak for 45 minutes, lecturing people and lecturing things that have nothing to do with good and efficient government, is what we should be concerned with. And we should not allow myself, anybody in the general public, to personally attack you who are doing a service for us, more or less volunteers, that we should, we should hold you in some form of respect. I don't care if I agree with you or not. Because you know what? I don't agree with everybody all the time, anyway. But to start it off, that's what we should do to make the meetings better.
I tried to limit time once.
Mr. Luciano, may I say something? I think that you also need to include the audience, not to attack speakers. And that has not been the case. The audience, the audience has attacked the speakers. So that's something that needs to stop also.
But as long as, as long as you put it in the context of the audience.
I'm saying the audience. I'm saying the audience.
Absolutely. And I've said before, I've heard things from one side of the room...
No, but you've seen that.
And I've heard other things from other side of the room, and I'm not picking on anybody for anything.
I know.
I mean, when I'm talking, I mean it for everybody.
And I am, too. I am, too. And you've been at the meeting, so you've seen the audience participation.
And I've spoken up about it. It happened, I've already get up here and said, and my exact words were, I hear chirping from this side of the room, and I hear chirping from that side of the room.
I'm talking about more than chirping.
Well, I'm trying to be, you know, you sat up here.
Oh, yeah.
You know what goes on, and it's not one side that we can blame, okay? But if you're sitting up here, then you have to use the gavel equally, not when you just don't like things you hear or not support or do support. You have to, it can't just be, it has to be more respectful, and it starts with all of you.
In deference to the speakers, I try to give them deference, and I, once I try to limit the time to five minutes, and it doesn't work because then people just go on anyway. And then what I do now, though, is if you got redundant, like you kind of just did, if you kept doing that, I would have said, you're getting redundant with Luciano, take a break, come back when you have something new to say, that kind of thing, but...
Second off, you don't allow people to come back after this whole one time.
That's what it is.
Which is not right either, because you guys bring up things while we're talking about it. You bring up things that we didn't talk about previously, and just because I sat down...
No, that's a good point, yeah.
Doesn't mean I shouldn't be able to come back up and ask another question that you might have raised something. And talking about redundancy, I've sat here many nights and listened to redundancy of things that were being said over and over and over, and no one ever said, you're being redundant. So yes, I might be a little redundant, but just don't be as quick to correct me.
I didn't.
Correct everyone.
Yes. Anybody else? Yes.
Dallas Moore, 626 South Street, English List. The past administration, your administration, I've been complaining about the same piece of property, the same cars, the same everything. Five weeks ago, I called you up and asked you to please have a meeting with me and your I happened to bump into your administrator today at the store, and he says we took the cars off the grass. When Carol McMorrow was president, council president, I took it to the property and showed her three vehicles that are abandoned with the hoods up, no license plates. The cars are still there today.
Mr. Barbaro, that's right.
This is three years. Let's stop.
Forget Mr. Barbaro. Forget him. Forget everybody. I want to know who is getting paid off, because nothing is going on. That's, that's, that's the bottom line. I know you don't like...
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
You're out of order.
You're out of order if you can't watch the people you hired to take care of something.
That's not right.
That is right.
That's not right.
Something's wrong.
You can't do that.
Something's wrong in this town.
All right, well, you could defend people all you want.
I'm not defending anybody. Something's wrong.
You just accused someone that's...
No, 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 I said somebody's getting paid...
Did you do that with the old mayor? Did you come up to...
Of course, why not? I told him he's fully should do.
All right.
Why, do you think you're exempt from it?
Listen.
I didn't care if it was Parisi, I don't care if it's you. Something's wrong.
Let me speak.
Yeah, I did. I told you.
Let me speak.
I'll have a meeting with you. Did you have one?
No, I didn't say I was going to have a meeting with you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I said I was going to have the people who work for this borough deal with your issue.
Oh, they're doing very good.
Now, let me...
Five weeks ago, I called you up and asked you to please have a meeting with me and your I happened to bump into your administrator today at the store, and he says we took the cars off the grass. When Carol McMorrow was president, council president, I took it to the property and showed her three vehicles that are abandoned with the hoods up, no license plates. The cars are still there today.
Mr. Barbaro, that's right.
This is three years, let's stop.
Forget Mr. Barbaro. Forget him, forget everybody. I want to know who is getting paid off, because nothing is going on. That's, that's, that's the bottom line. I know you don't like...
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
You're out of order.
No, I'm not out of order.
You're out of order.
You're out of order if you can't watch the people you hired to take care of something.
That's not right.
That is right.
That's not right.
Something's wrong.
You can't do that.
Something's wrong in this town.
All right, well, you could defend people all you want.
I'm not defending anybody. Something's wrong.
You just accused someone that's...
No, 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 I said somebody's getting paid...
Did you do that with the old mayor? Did you come up to...
Of course, why not? I told him he's fully should do.
All right.
Why, do you think you're exempt from it?
Listen.
I didn't care if it was Parisi, I don't care if it's you. Something's wrong.
Let me speak.
Yeah, I did. I told you.
Let me speak.
Did you, I'll have a meeting with you. Did you have one?
No, I didn't say I was going to have a meeting with you.
Oh, yeah, okay.
I said I was going to have the people who work for this borough deal with your issue.
Oh, they're doing very good.
Now, let me...
They're doing very good.
Let me speak, let me speak.
Go right ahead.
Mr. Barbaro.
Yes, I went down to the property that was in discussion, I took a picture of the property, I went back about a few days later, and the cars, the vehicles were no longer on the, um, grass. That's what the complaint was, it was not, Tony, that's exactly what it was.
Wrong. Go back to the tape. Wrong.
Well, that's, and I, and I said to you it was removed. And I went, and I spoke to Arch Pesta, it was removed, I went back, and I, after I took the pictures, and it was removed.
The cars are there.
Here's what I want you to do. Tomorrow, by the close of business, every car on that property that doesn't belong there must be removed. You know why? Because I'm tired of him coming here complaining about the same thing every day. He, he's not entirely wrong, he's not entirely right. His delivery is terrible tonight. However, there's no excuse for those cars to be there, okay? Just like on Floyd, I noticed there's a pickup truck and a trailer on a property next to the former mayor's house, it's been there for two months. They have to be gone, all right?
A hundred percent.
Enforce the code universally, okay? Tell Art, tomorrow, get a tow truck there if you have to, get him out of there, okay? That's enough. All right? You done? Good. Anybody else? Yes. Okay.
Is that Mr. Barbaro, 106 Halle 1? I'm really excited to be up here today.
Let me congratulate you also.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Um, I've always felt a little bit intimidated to come and sit up here because I actually have been attacked by people on the council. So I'm glad to hear that that's not going to happen to me tonight, because I have one request. I do agree that 607 is the biggest problem facing this community right now.
Eight hundred.
Eight hundred, I'm sorry. And I would like to, if possible, request from the mayor that I be added to the ad hoc committee, considering that I am going to be sitting up there in January, I'd like to get a little jumpstart on understanding from that side of the dais exactly what we're facing. Because the truth is, is sitting on this side of the dais, I couldn't possibly tell you a hundred percent that I understand it. So I'd like to get a jumpstart, because if we are going to court on January 22nd, I'd like to be part of that committee if that's possible.
That, that's fine, that's understandable, consider that, it just, so you understand that there's strict confidentiality throughout that committee?
I, I would hope so.
Okay, thanks. Yes.
Debbie Fair, 49 Irving Avenue, Englewood Cliff. On the beginning of the meeting, the attorney mentioned several resolutions, such as you would be adding something or whatever. And in going through the packet that was handed out to the public, um, this packet, well, packets are the same, uh, I do not have Resolution 237, 249, 250, or 251.
Okay, so, 230...
Seven.
237 we don't have yet. I'm going to be stating that orally when we discuss the meeting.
That'll be an oral resolution that you'll read to the public?
Yeah, and then, and then if, they vote, and it will...
But the full resolution will be read to the public?
No, the terms of the particular matter will be read, and then a written resolution will be granted. And since, for example, I'm just going to do this stuff in front of the media, of resolution, but for example, this is an appointment of council. For all of the standard provisions we put into appointment of council through a professional services agreement, you have a look. I'm not stating that during the motion, I will state that the standard provisions of the resolution will be in there. We know the name, the firm, the not to exceed, and the hourly rate. I'm going to give that in the public, do you understand?
But do we have your assurance that nothing else will be added to that resolution other than what you're stating?
Uh, for certain resolutions, yes.
For certain resolutions?
Well, how about... How about you do my job? How about you do my job?
Well, yeah, that would be nice.
I understand, thank you.
I'm just saying that any resolution...
Can you tell the answer?
Sorry. Any resolution that you're passing should be read and full to the public if it's not given to them.
Okay, I, I, I understand and I disagree with you, but before I leave, so that, 237 is not in the packet, what was the next one?
249.
249?
Not in the packet, 250 and 251.
Right.
I don't have it.
That's right, you're correct.
And, and we'll be reading those in there entirely?
I'll be reading the, uh, particular terms and provisions, that's right. And there, and it will include a provision for standard language. We've adopted all these types of things before the last...
Is there a reason that the standard language wasn't prepared ahead of time?
Yes.
And then you just add the particulars?
Yes.
So why wasn't that done?
I would respectfully decline to answer you, thank you.
Just, just, um, for the record, um, you may think it's strange, but no one ever leaves this room without having a complete picture, oh, picture of...
Well, we're obviously not going to get a complete picture of these resolutions.
You will.
Well, are you in the caucus meeting, Miss? All of those new business items are part of the resolution?
Regardless, if it's a resolution, any resolution that's being passed by the council...
I understand, not every word.
Should either be, uh, handed out or read and full. That is, that's the way it is. So, and now, Mayor, to your comment, uh...
Uh, I didn't finish my comment because you actually interrupted me. What I was saying was, we, we try to make sure that everyone who leaves here at the end of our meetings knows exactly what was voted on and approved. Um, sometimes there are oral resolutions which become memorialized after the meeting, and, and those too are available online, um, sometimes...
An oral resolution is fine, as long as it's read and full.
So sometimes we're also, um, working on things, sometimes we're working on things up to the last minute before the meeting, so, um, I'm sure you understand that.
I just, you know, I'd like the public to be fully informed.
You are, you are.
I also, I would just like to comment on previous comment of yours. To state that people were intimidated and couldn't come up here and speak when Mayor Parisi was the mayor is just not true. I was sitting up there, I was here for ten and a half years, and anyone who wanted to speak their minds spoke their mind and were free to speak their minds, and they were certainly never treated the way that you have treated many residents of this town when they came and spoke.
Thank you. Anybody else wishing to be heard?
Could I, could I say something?
Yes, of course.
Um, as a member of the public, I was treated very badly by Mayor Parisi. Um, uh, he threatened to sue me, and, uh, he, uh, kept telling me my time was up, my three minutes was up, my three minutes was up, and Councilman Versa kept his timer on his phone to keep the three minutes. And, uh, your three minutes are up, your three minutes are up, your three minutes are up. So, uh, I know that he did not always treat everybody fairly. Thank you.
And just for the record, you're in favor of time?
What?
Okay, well, I'll give you something to do.
You were the timekeeper, Ed, with, with your phone.
I know, I was doing it again, it's just...
I, I, I don't, I don't want to time democracy. Democracy should just work and flow, and, and we, we'll all get along, I promise you. Anybody else? Yes, uh, Russ? Sorry, Maria.
Russell Paulino, 220 Abbey Avenue, good evening. First comment is, uh, member of the public, Ms. Luciano, suggested that, um, this is not a forum for anything political regarding campaigns. I understand, I think, the point, but, uh, when there are folks that are maligned as part of that campaign, I think this is exactly the forum for it to be made known, um, um, when that happens. Uh, I sat at this microphone exactly a year ago after the elec, last election, and spoke about how I found it, um, unfortunate that members of the, uh, uh, one of the parties decided to malign the planning board back at that time regarding finding, uh, an area of our borough an area needed rehabilitation, at least recommending to the mayor council, that that should be, uh, uh, done. And, you know, I thought that that was wrong, and I spoke about it then. And I come back, you know, here a year later, where the stakes are so much higher than they were then, that was a pretty, uh, specific item. Um, you know, it looks like all the ammunition was indeed unloaded on the planning board this year. And I hope I have the attention of all the council members, I'm not sure that I do. And I, and I find it really unpleasant and, and just not right. As volunteer members of the board that did what they thought was right, I stand behind them 100%. And for those that use our actions as a battering ram for their, for their campaign candidates, I find to be despicable, is the word I'll, I'll use tonight. And I think that if one looks at some of the statements made in that campaign literature that may have indeed compromised the boroughs or weakened the borough's position in some way, that is even more, more of a, of a problem. You know, I asked, probably, I think it was a reorg meeting at the planning board, and I spoke at this microphone probably around the same time, that the boroughs, uh, stand together. And this is not against, against 807 Avenue. I have no bias against them. It's about the, the process, and we know that we have an issue that we have to deal with, and we have to find solutions. And one hoped that we could have worked on that together, but the campaign literature clearly drove, drove a wedge very, very deep into that, into that, uh, process that should have been, I think, collaborative, uh, more collaborative than it was. And I welcome other members now that are going to serve, hopefully, on this committee, and they will see what this is all about, and how difficult the process it is. And then maybe they'll actually recognize the fact that, hey, this is the real deal. It takes concentration, it takes work, and it's not appropriate to criticize those that have participated in the process. And I'm talking now about the planning board's part in the process. And hopefully, when they realize all the facts and they understand the intricacies, they will actually step up and say, you know what, we're started, we were wrong. I hope that I would hear that at some point. Thank you.
Uh, thank you, and thank you for your service. Um, yes.
Maria Valari, 45 Jane Drive. I just want to make a, an observation that I made tonight, is that I've been paying attention to everybody's body languages up here, and I, I note that the people on the right of me here are paying attention, they're listening, they're engaged in what's going on. I see here texting, lowered faces, and a body language that isn't really interested in what the residents that are coming up here to say. And I'm really disheartened by that, because I feel that, how can you speak about uniting a community? And by the way, it's a 50/50 divided community, okay? Let's make that clear. And I feel that these people on this side are listening, even if they don't agree with you, they're, they're paying attention and they're making eye contact. I see disinterested, falling asleep, uh, texting, whatever it is that you guys are doing there, I'm really disappointed that you don't even look up to, to make contact. How can you expect to unite this town when you have this? And by the way, I have been treated really bad by then-Mayor Parisi, as well many others. Debbie, Debbie Fair can make that statement because she was part of the good old boys' club. She, she benefited from the Parisi regime, and so it's easy for her to say that she never witnessed anything like this. Well, she should review some of the old videos, if they're still available out there, because I remember that mayor getting off the dais and walking up to Ms. Lauren Eastwood, right within inches of her face, pointing at her and yelling at her. So don't talk to me about that Mayor Cranjack is awful? Well then, you know why? Because you weren't on the other side of the receiving team when Mayor Parisi was up there. I am really disappointed that we have a situation in this town with our police force, with their union, who takes sides politically. As a Republican, and maybe I should have never changed my U2 and R, because now, I don't, I really don't feel so comfortable in this town anymore. I don't feel, I, I hope, I think most officers out there, but to have these individuals here say that we should drop charges, that, oh, he was just kidding, or whatever excuse, we've had people that had been fired, have resigned, from all over this country for less than that, and to, and to sit there and not agree with doing something about this, something, I think it's a really disgrace. And as a woman, I'm insulted. Is it because I'm a Republican woman? Because that's what it seems to be. If you're a Democrat woman, we have to all rush to you and save you, but if you're a Republican, you're crazy, your ideas are wrong. So I wanted to say that. I, I, I have to tell you that the manners that came out were very disappointing to me. Um, I, I, I feel that they were hurtful to, to the residents of this town. Uh, this affordable housing thing, I, I, I think it was misrepresented, and it's a shame, because we should all be on the same side with that. Uh, and, uh, and, and I really like the idea of having people sitting on this side but listening to that. I don't know. Thank you.
Uh, anybody else wishing to be heard? Uh, okay, um, seeing and hearing, no one to have a motion to close public, on favor?
Aye.
All right. Okay, also, I see Jimmy Song here, I want to congratulate him on the campaign victory. See, Danyi, Danyi ran a great campaign, uh, please people get involved, Mark Parkewell as well. It's great to see, uh, new faces getting involved, and, um...
Bless you.
Bless you. So, thank you for getting involved. Um, we, um... We're going to approve minutes tonight.
Yeah, just want to have a point of order, Mayor. Um, we received about 98 pages of minutes on Tuesday night, so I just want to see if we can table that to the next meeting to have more time to review them. Uh, we can do it at the special meeting, that gives us...
Is that all right?
More time. I, I didn't have a chance to read all of it. Uh, I don't know if anyone else on the council got through all 98 pages.
I sent this in July, a month ago. I'd like you to clarify that, because I didn't send all these...
All right, some were sent earlier, some were sent on Tuesday.
May I clarify for the record?
Mm-hmm, sure.
In July, well, I'd like to clarify, because I didn't send out a whole bunch of emails.
Okay, go ahead, clarify.
In July, I sent out the minutes from March to June 13th, and the mayor asked me to pull them off the agenda. About a month ago, I resent them again at advice of the mayor. So what I sent a few days ago, you're right, I don't know if it was 96 pages, I didn't count, but that was the meetings from July to September 26th.
Okay, so let's give everybody a chance to catch up, um, yeah.
And I hope that we're going to do this. We have all the closed session minutes to come, and we sort of planned November for open session in caucus and all, and, and December for the close. So if we could have you all do that for these motions for the November 28th meeting, that would be good, because you're about to get a little closed session as well. Is that okay?
I live in that, I'm okay with it.
So do we need a motion to table this? Is that, or can we just...
All right, I can just, I can just pull it off.
Okay.
Can I second it?
Yeah, go ahead, hold on.
Oh.
I'll pull it off, all right. We'll put it back on on November 28th. Thank you, everyone. Thanks. Um, next up, the payment of claims. Uh, Resolution 236, payment of claims October 11th, 2018 through November 8th, 2018. Two million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand dollars, two mil... Do that over. Two million, four hundred eighty-nine thousand, two hundred thirty-three dollars and thirty cents. Have a motion to approve that. Have a motion to approve that. Second.
Counselperson to versa. E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Thank you. Resolution 237, appointment of co-counsel for Inray, Borough of Anglewood Cliffs, docket number BER-L-6119-15. Peren, affordable housing, closed peren.
So we've discussed, we met with Thomas J. Troutner. He is being appointed along with his law firm, Chisia, Shenian, and Gianta Mop C.P.C. They have multiple offices, including in West Orange and New York City. Mr. Troutner came in to close session and the resolution is for a contract, professional services agreement. The standard resolution language will be included that you've seen a million times in resolutions to appoint counsel. The fee will be an hourly rate of $280 per hour. That was negotiated downward by the mayor. That will be in the resolution. The initial not to exceed will be not to exceed $20,000. That will be in the resolution. Of course, the standard language includes that the mayor and counsel can increase the not to exceed should that be necessary. In addition, the appointment is to, the term of the appointment will be to the end of the litigation, the subject litigation. Mr. Troutner will serve as co-counsel with Jeffrey Serinian in the affordable housing litigation in Ray and Wood Cliffs. Chris Martin, our planning board attorney, will no longer serve as co-counsel in that matter. We are preparing, of course, for the coming months with respect to that. I do not have anything else to add unless any member of the council has a question that you think I need to state on the record for the motion.
Have a motion to approve that. Second.
Counselperson to versa.
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
Resolution 238, approval of addendum to settlement agreement between Borough and Scotty and Scott Mora.
Just for the record, you did all receive this yesterday. It wasn't in the package tonight, but it was.
I just want to add that I am not supportive of this. The council can do whatever they want, obviously. I feel that as a borough, we're not getting the benefit of the bargain that I negotiated in September or August of 2017. And therefore, I want to renegotiate certain aspects of this.
I am recommending, as the council knows, I am recommending that we adopt this approval to the addendum to the settlement agreement so that the disability application can go forward and be approved by the pension board once and for all.
Let me clarify. One of the reasons, well, the only reason I'm not approving this is that when we negotiated the settlement, there was a clause that we negotiated for which our labor council, not Ann Marie, and our former borough administrator said was enforceable. The pension board said it is not enforceable. And I feel that we paid for something that is not enforceable, therefore, somebody needs to make us whole.
Oh, the resolution was given to all the mayor and council. I'll do the highlight points, okay? You guys wrote about it yesterday. I understand you don't have it. There's so many resolutions that have got missed. It's okay. I do have it somewhere in this pile of papers. Okay. Yes, because it is someone on here, all right? This is the title, Resolution authorizing addendum to settlement agreement and general lease, release between the Borough of Anglewood Cliffs Chief Michael Chiapi and Scott Mora. These are the high points on the resolution. There's whereas, as we previously entered into a settlement agreement, and the settlement agreement was required, an application for involuntary disability retirement. The pension boards deemed certain language in the agreement to be unacceptable. The parties have reached an agreement to remove that language, and Scott Mora has signed off on it. And now the borough and Chief Chiapi have to sign off on it. And the borough wants, the way the resolution is written, the borough wants the involuntary disability application to be processed, considered, and approved by the pensions board. And the only way that can happen is if we do these addendums, which is why I recommend that we approve the addendum and that it be signed. Chief Chiapi is a party to the original litigation. He was sued by Scott Mora. He was defended by the borough and GIP. We will need Chief Chiapi's signature on the addendum. So I asked, I wrote the resolution to include not only that the mayor or his designee is authorized to execute the addendum, and that the borough clerk is authorized to witness, but that Chief Michael Chiapi is also directed to sign the addendum. His signature needs to be on it. So I am asking the mayor and council, as Chief Chiapi's employer, to direct that he sign the addendum. I'm sorry, the addendum is to remove the language from the agreement that the pension boards finds objectionable. It's a no return to work clause. No return to work. And I'm sorry, I can't, I can't do it with this and this. I'll explain, I'll explain.
Talk to the audience, she'll explain.
I'll explain as far as I can, understanding that there is still pending litigation with Mr. Mora. And we still have to get through the disability process. The goal here is, and one of the things we negotiated last year was involuntary disability application approved, and Mr. Mora off our books and no longer an employee. During the negotiation, we asked, and Mr. Mora agreed, not to return to work. The language is in there, as the mayor says, and he believes what he has said. We had negotiated for that, it was part of the overall deal. The pension boards, the pension board has relied upon a statute that says someone who's doing an involuntary, I'm sorry, not involuntary, someone who is doing a disability application must have the ability to return to work if he recuperates as unable to do so. That period of time by statute is five years after approval of a disability application. So for, once we get it approved, for five years, there is an entree for Mr. Mora to come back to the police department. However, 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 I want to tell the members of the public, as I have discussed with the mayor, the council, and I cannot fully discuss here, there are other requirements, not just recuperation, that will have to be faced for Mr. Mora to come back, including, obviously, training. He has been out of the police service for a number of years. There will have to be, if he were ever to come back to this borough, five years from now, four years from now. One of the things I've said, and which is fairly obvious, is you must retrain and pass all the training requirements. Another requirement is that a medical exam be required by the borough and passed by Mr. Mora before he come back to employment. And I will not opine as to whether that, it ever happened or not, but regardless, that's a requirement. A third thing is that, like a new officer almost, because he's been off our force actively for a long time, he would have to pass a fitness for duty physically and the psychological, just as if he was a new employee coming back. There would be a lot of moving parts that we can use, that the borough still has, to enforce the agreement even without this language. But if we don't take it out, we can't even get him on a disability pension and off our books. That's the first step. That's why I'm urging the council to adopt it. I understand, we negotiated for it, but we need to get beyond this to an approval by the pensions board. This is the way to do it. They've approved this addenda form. That's it. They've approved it. I hope I've explained in layman's terms.
Thank you. So we negotiated for it, yes, but we also paid for it, and we're not getting that benefit, which bothers me the most. So I've asked the borough labor council to basically kick in the difference. I haven't heard from them.
I'm going to undertake a negotiation.
Yes, well, all right, so I leave it to the council to either make a motion or to just ignore this for now. No takers. Okay. Let's, um...
You need to take a vote, right?
There's no motion. There's no motion.
I talk too much, right, Ed? Did I talk too much? Did we forget what the motion is?
No, there's no motion pending. Nobody made a motion.
Okay. Motion to...
Nobody moved it.
Nobody moved it.
Okay, is anyone going to move this? Okay, let's do this then. Let's pull it tonight, we'll put it up for November 28th, and I hope that we get some compensation back, you know, to partially make us whole. Can you talk to them? Thank you.
I will.
And talk to Mira also.
I'm not voting for Mr. Mora.
Talk to her attorney. Next up, 239, approved settlement of Lavery et al. versus Borough, docket number BER-SPC 13795-18.
Right, that is an SPC document in the special civil court. Members of the council. To the public, just very briefly, this resolution was done, but it was missed in the package. It is a resolution authorizing settling of the matter entitled Lavery, Savachi, and Abramadis and Cullen, Larry Cullen, versus the borough. It is seeking $15,000 in attorney's fees. The authorization is to settle that matter by our signed counsel, Anthony Buco and Murphy McKean, settle that matter in entirety for $9,000 of the 15, to approve, to get a stipulation of dismissal with prejudice, a release, a general release, and whatever else Anthony Buco, the borough's defense attorney, needs this borough to have. Previously, the mayor and council had authorized a certain amount in closed session. This is, this $9,000 is recommended by the borough's current defense attorney and myself as a reasonable way to end this litigation without further force to the borough. Any members of the council have any questions?
No. Second.
Counselperson to versa. E. Park?
She's recused.
Correct.
Thank you, ma'am.
O?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
And Park?
Yes.
Whoa.
Yes.
All right, so the next one is 240, create affordable housing ad hoc committee. This is a mayor's committee, I will create it, I will appoint to it, and Ann Marie needs to say a few things about it.
So there will be a resolution, and since this is not a standard resolution that the mayor and council have, we discussed it in new business during the caucus, and I already have advised members of the public who are here and the mayor and council members as to what is being voted upon tonight for the title of creation of an affordable housing ad hoc committee. There's been a few changes as stated by the mayor earlier. There will be six members on this committee. Those members will be, I'm not talking about names, what I'm talking about is the type of person. There will be the planning board chair, whoever that may be, would be part of this ad hoc committee. Two council members, whoever it is that the mayor appoints, will be part of this committee. The borough administrator, whoever that is, will be part of this committee. And two citizens will be part of this committee. Right? So that's six members. I'm saying six now to accommodate our discussions.
You said before three, it's going to be one.
Yeah, right, but the mayor wants to expand it, and then you guys talked about that in our new business. Okay, so listen again. Planning board chair...
Let her go through.
All right, we did talk about, you're right. Planning board chair, borough administrator, two council members, two citizens, who had an offer from a citizen who wants to be on the ad hoc committee.
I have a question.
And she's going to be a councilwoman. Yes. Oh, I'm not done stating the requirements, but go ahead.
Oh, okay. So my question has to do with the planning board chair being on the ad hoc committee.
Yes.
Wouldn't there be a council? I mean, the planning board is being sued, right, by the developer?
Okay, the planning board, yeah.
So how can the chairman be part of the ad hoc committee?
Okay, so I'll explain. First off, the planning board chair is appointed, and that makes him bound by fiduciary duty to do what's left for the borough, that's number one. Number two, he does not have a conflict of interest as the planning board chair because the planning board is sued. And I've had a judge say it numerous times, just because you're named as a defendant, it doesn't create a conflict of interest. If you are a plaintiff in a case, there might be a conflict in interest, and 99% of the time there is. So the fact that we're sued, and 800 Sylvan sued us, our board and our borough, by the way, not just the board, wait a minute, in two separate lawsuits, this ad hoc committee, I'm not done yet, I'm saying what's going to be in the resolution. But the purpose of the ad hoc committee is to assist with affordable housing and the Inray, Inray, the Borough of Anglewood Cliffs, docket number BER-L-6119-15. That will be in the resolution. Gloria, do you have another question on this point?
I do. I disagree with that, Ann Marie, because as a, one of the members to the ad hoc committee, he will be privy to a lot of the confidential information, and, you know, he is the chairman of the planning board.
Who do you think has been doing all the work for the last year on this? You've never raised that before, that the guy's been working day and night on this along with Ms. McMorrow, and now all of a sudden there's a conflict? That's very disingenuous. He's been doing all the work.
Mayor, I'm entitled to ask questions, and you don't need to put me down.
That's not putting you down.
Yes, yes, you are.
You're doing things...
You're calling me that I'm being disingenuous, and I'm not.
He's been working for the last year. Where have you been?
I'm simply asking questions, and I'm entitled to that.
You are entitled, but he's been working on this for the last year, and he seemed fine with that. And he seemed fine with Ms. McMorrow working as well. I have a real problem with that because we should express gratitude to Russell Perino for doing all that work. Ms. Fair, you don't have to yell out that much. I mean, come on, guys, let's stop playing games up here. There's no conflict. Last time I checked, the planning board was part of our government, okay? We're on the same team here.
I don't have a problem with that. I think the council should be your partner. Not citizens. I have a problem with the planning board. You should be involved.
Well, I mean, honestly, in the last year, the council's been very disinterested, other than the people who were active. The last three years and 43 years before that. So nothing's been done, guys. Let's stop it.
I don't understand.
What's been done? You've been on this council for eight years. Nothing's been done, Ed.
That is an absolute lie.
You need to stop yelling out of your chair.
That's their plea.
You can't do that. If so much had been done, we wouldn't be sued right now.
That's right. They are continuing to state in of what's going to be in the resolution.
I'm going to ask you to leave, Ms. Fair, because I can't conduct a meeting like this.
I've got to save the rest of it.
All right, Ann Marie's going to finish.
I have to make the record, and thank you, Councilwoman O for your question. I understand your question. Six members, I already told you the type of member it's going to be. The term will be until the task is completed, because an ad hoc committee is an informal committee. It is created for the purpose of one task. The task is to assist with the pending litigation and/or other resolution of the affordable housing docket number case... pending litigation and/or other resolution of the affordable housing docket number case that I just read into the record. That will be the term. It will be a mayor appointment. It's an ad hoc committee. It does not require the consent, the appointments do not require the advice and consent of council. It's a mayor appointment. There will be, so you understand, even though it is informal committee, informal committee, that means we do not expect this committee to hold meetings because then they have to comply with open public meeting. There will be no meetings of this committee. There will be communications... Okay, I understand. There will, you can be communications. You can, you can join together and discuss your, your united task, but no, excuse me, please, there will be no decision making by this ad hoc committee. There will be no action taken by the ad hoc committee that binds the Borough. Anything that they do, whether as a group or individually, shall be in furtherance of their task. The duties will be to assist the litigation council assigned to the matter, to liaison between the litigation council and the mayor and council, to report to the mayor and council in closed session if necessary or in open session about the activities the mayor and council need to be advised of. Such other actions that are reasonable, reasonable and necessary and interpreted as part of their task. Assist with respect to the upcoming litigation. In addition, the resolution will refer to that as an appointee, you shall serve with honor. You're not a Borough employee and you're not an elected official necessarily, but the same fiduciary duty that those type of people, employees or elected officials have to the Borough, will be expected from every member of the ad hoc committee. So, there will be language that the people shall serve with honor and by the way, that's defined in our state statutes with respect to employees. It makes it similar for these committee members. There will be a fiduciary duty to the Borough. There will be no decision-making capabilities for the, for this, um, committee. Questions? Any questions?
You know what? I agree with, um, Councilman Zaversa. This should be on the council, not some members of the, you know, residents, especially, you know, I, I, you know, as, um, Ellen had stated before during the caucus meeting, just call it what it is. Like, you're creating a, a position for Carol McMorro to stay on, on the Court. And this is not, this is not what we wanna do.
Can I add something here? Let, let, let me finish. Hold on, let me finish here. Uh, there's no one that's worked harder on this than, than Ms. McMorro and Russell Perrino. And let me ask you guys a question. Let me ask you guys a question since you're so interested in all this. Have you ever attended a court session regarding affordable housing in the last year? Any of you?
We were not the liaison to the...
No, no, but Ed said he wanted to be involved as a councilman. Nothing stops you from being involved even if there's an ad hoc committee. You're still the council. You still are ultimately responsible. So, have, have you ever attended a hearing?
Does that mean we're not involved?
No, no, have you ever gone?
I'm just asking a few questions.
No.
Well, you're not zealously involved.
Well, have you?
I have, actually.
How many times have you attended?
I've done several times.
I'm also involved. I keep that in mind.
Well, you, you said you wanted to be involved, so I'm not trying to insult you, but I, I also want you to be honest with the public. You've never been to court on this matter.
No.
But you're, you're just not interested. Okay. Alright, let's...
I'm not there all day either. I, I actually got in my car and drove out of my way to go to the court hearings and to the mediations. Um, okay, look, enough of the games. Let's
have a motion for this. We have a vote. Have a motion, please? So moved. Second. Have a roll call.
You didn't even mention the names of the people.
The what?
The names of the people on the committee.
He's going to do that on the agenda later. There's an appointment provision on the agenda later.
It's down, it's down below.
We are creating the ad hoc committee now. I just told you the terms that will be included.
Can I be recognized?
Yeah, it's, it's down below on the agenda. You'll see the appointments. Yes.
So, I think this is highly inappropriate, um, you know, obviously for the obvious reasons and I don't wanna reiterate the reasons, but that being said, I mean, you appointed Carol McMorro as the liaison and she's the only one that's been very on top of it. Um, now she is gone. I understand that. Um, you know, I make a motion to, uh...
We're voting.
Well, you, you recognize me, right? So, I wanna make a motion just to make Gloria the next liaison. How about that? Why do we need to have six people who can't communicate together, who cannot meet together, you know?
You have public meetings. You're not a public body.
Okay, we're in the middle. We can make another motion after we finish our vote here.
You just said we had no meetings. I mean, it, it doesn't make any sense.
If you wanna have a meeting...
Well, let me ask you guys a question.
And unless you're making new law now, right?
We're having a vote, but just for the record, since Councilwoman McMorro resigned...
The parties are supposed to be done by the end of the year, correct, Emery?
That's fine. We'll redo it next week.
This one is, I've already told you, the term is, the term of the ad hoc committee is until the task is completed. That's typical of ad hoc. Whether you like it or not, I don't know.
Okay, turn around a vote, please.
Counselperson Zaversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
Absolutely not.
O'Shea?
Absolutely, yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. Uh, I also wanna mention that since Councilwoman McMorro resigned her post, I'd like to know, what have you done for affordable housing litigation? Have you done anything? Have you gone to any meetings, any court sessions? Because you had the opportunity.
You owe us information.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
I got, I got the agenda in five o'clock.
No, no, no. They, they, that's all fully informed. It's all public knowledge as well.
Okay, but you want us to find that?
Have you expressed...
You've had the agenda before then.
Have you expressed any interest? Have you asked me for dates, the schedules? No. No, no, no. Okay.
Hold on. We took, we took a note. Do you remember the part that comes?
I wrote it down.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, 241 ratified disciplinary charges against Captain Brian Murphy, dated September 21, 2018, paren, tape, sixty-one B, comma, multiple incidents, close paren. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Have a roll call.
Counselperson Zaversa?
No.
Park?
No.
O.?
No.
Yeah, that's not appropriate.
Who's, uh, members of the public?
Okay. Can the public please stop?
O'Shea?
Yes.
Ratified disciplinary charges.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Three, three?
Yes. 242 ratified disciplinary charges against Captain Timothy Regan, dated September 12, 2018, paren, tapes 102 and 100, comma, multiple incidents, close paren. Have a motion, please? So moved.
Second.
Have a roll call, please.
Counselperson Zaversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Is that my mayor?
Yes. 243 ratified disciplinary charges against Lieutenant William Henkelman, dated September 12, 2018, paren, tape 102, comma, multiple incidents, close paren. Have a motion? So moved. So, have a roll call, please.
Counselperson Zaversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. 244 authorized grant agreement in County of, with County of Bergen for community development. Have a motion. So moved. Second. Have a roll call.
Counselperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
245 authorized increase in not to exceed amount for special counsel, Lamza and Lamza. So moved.
Second.
Who moved it? I'm sorry?
Mark Park.
Oh, Park.
Mark.
Counselperson Zaversa?
I don't have that resolution in my bag.
Which one?
241.
Yeah, I didn't have that one.
How are we voting ourselves to the right of the act?
I'm sorry. I don't, I don't know about that.
That's one of my issues.
You didn't speak into the microphone?
It should be for ten thousand dollars.
No, we raised it to twenty.
No, that, that...
You'll put them on for the special.
It's a different one, Councilman. I'm sorry, we have to table this one.
Alright.
Actually, just pull it. Let's pull it. 246 authorized major consulting to apply for the 2019 Bergen County Community Development Block Grant.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Counselperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
247 authorization for transferred budget appropriations.
So moved.
Second.
Counselperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
248 authorized settlement of tax appeal, block 411, lot 16, 440 Sullivan Avenue.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Counselperson Zaversa?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Recused.
Whoa?
Recused.
249 approving and ratifying letter directive to use accumulated time benefits to Michael Chaffey dated November 7, 2017, paren, resulting in insubordination disciplinary charges dated November 20, 2017, close paren. Have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Have a roll call.
Discussion?
We didn't have discussion on this. We didn't. 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 Alright, so let me just, I've got, it's up to you, man.
So, we're in the middle. We were in the middle of the vote.
So, what was the motion?
The motion is what it says, approving and ratifying letter directive. It's 249. Just read it to yourself.
Just the letter?
Okay, so, yeah, just the letter. You got a copy of the letter and this is gonna be the same language that we've used in, um, under ratifications two weeks ago? Ed, what's your question?
It pertains to the same...
The language.
Appropriate authority.
Right, right, yes. Yes.
That's what I was trying to say.
Yes, and the peering officer addressed that differently in this case than usual, right? We talked about that in the open session during caucus.
So, what is...
I think, or what's the...
What is the reason that we have to approve the letter, um, if he is the appropriate authority?
We're ratified.
It's in the interest of good order.
Ratifying. Interest of good order. Sir, uh, and this issue has been decided several times. I discussed it with you in closed, other things that I can't say now.
But that's like we had a disagreement of what, what you, you interpreted the answer being what I interpreted.
Well, we're in the middle of a vote.
There was a voluntary dismissal today on that very issue.
That issue wasn't...
We're in the middle of voting.
No, we don't have a second.
We did, actually.
Oh, no, no one made a... Yeah.
We did. We had a second. Mark.
Oh, I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. Okay. Counsel, I have the, okay. Counselperson Zaversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Whoa?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. 250, um, so Borough Council will state this as a modification.
Uh, right, so this matter was on new business and discussed in open public session during the caucus. The council has before it the letter dated November 7, 2017, as well as the, um, uh, which resulted in the charges dated November 20, 2017. In addition, the council had, had before it the written recommendation report of the hearing officer dated circa, received April 9, 2018. It's not dated, but that's circa April 2018. Um, the, um, council talked about this in open session. There was no rice notice required because it was an open session. The council then received, went into closed session for the purpose of advisory, consultative and deliberative with me at that, after a few minutes of, of discussion of the legal, uh, requirements necessary for this particular disciplinary... The Borough Administrator, myself and the Borough Clerk left closed session. The council deliberated for approximately fifteen to twenty minutes and the purpose of this motion now, which I'm about to state, uh, and which one of you is going to, uh, advise, because I don't know how you wanna vote, the purpose of this motion is to, uh, this resolution will be to accept, modify or reject the hearing officer's recommendation. The first question is, does, uh, the resolution will contain additional language about, uh, the whereas clauses and the resolution itself where it says now therefore be resolved will embody what this motion is about to be. So, um, the motion is to accept, modify or reject the finding of the hearing officer as to the specification in charge. Which is it? Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion, Emery, to advise, to modify the penalty from ninety days for everyday work to two days for everyday work during, uh, the time the chief was supposed to exhaust his vacation.
Okay, I understand. Is there an acceptance, modification or rejection? Hold on, guys. Is there an acceptance, modification or rejecting of the hearing officer's recommendation on whether or not the charges should be sustained or unsustained? You need that part of the motion, too.
We'd like to sustain the charges.
Okay, so I can now state the motion and ask for someone to, and then the, what? Okay, uh, so council members, I'm going to state the motion and bear in mind that I previously did, we previously did a resolution a few months ago and it had some standard language in it and some supplemental language. That's going to be in there. The now there for part will be what I'm gonna say, okay? So, I'm not putting anything extra in, in the now there for part. The, uh, motion will be to accept the hearing officer's recommendation to sustain the charge of insubordination against Chief Chiapi effective on the, um, date stated in the hearing officer's report, uh, from when the date of the charges were issued, I believe. Um, the effective date of the letter sent by the mayor was November 8, 2017. The charges themselves were November 20, so there will be a sustaining of this insubordination from that date, whichever one is applicable, forward. Further, the second part of your decision-making deliberation is, uh, to modify the hearing officer's recommendation to make it less than what he recommended. He recommended X you're going with, which is higher. He recommended, um, a punishment for every day that the chief was out.
For every vacation.
For every vacation, for every day of insubordination for failing to use vacation. It was ninety days. This mayor and council has agreed, excuse me, this mayor and council has, had, will vote now on modification to two days penalty for every day he has been insubordinate. That was the hearing officer's. For the length of vacation, okay.
And all other charges.
Is this the motion that, uh, Councilman Wu is making?
Yes.
No, no, he's gotta adopt it.
Why are you, why are you reading the motion? He should be making that motion.
Yes, he, he can adopt what I wrote.
Well...
What I read.
Well, I hear from him what motion he's making.
Okay, he's got it, it's fine. Make the motion.
So moved.
Call it, say it.
Yeah, we're advising to modify the recommendation of the hearing officer, which was ninety day penalty for every day of, uh, insubordinated work. And it's insubordinated, insubordination for showing up for work, and we're gonna modify that to two days for every day that he showed up for work, uh, in, in subordination.
And your, your motion is... Excuse me, be quiet. It's not time for the council to, it's not time for the public to answer.
I defer to the borough attorney, I believe it's three hundred and forty-two days.
See, that, that's right. That he has a vacation. A calculation will be made, it's okay, okay? Your motion, excuse me, your motion needs to include whether or not you are, you are accepting the hearing officer's...
We're sustaining...
Sustaining the charges.
The charges, um, from the hearing officer.
Okay.
The charges are not from the hearing officer, the charges were made by the mayor.
You're ex... You're accepting the finding of the hearing officer.
That's not what he said, that's not what you told him to say. Can I make a recommendation? Can we table this to the special meeting and you draft the resolution? So we know what we're voting on?
Do you mean to sustain the finding as to insubordination?
This is ridiculous what you guys are doing.
Yeah, that's what we're...
It's not acceptable. You're making the motion, you don't even know what you're making the motion.
We, we know clearly what we're making the motion on, Gloria, there's not, we talked about this during closed session.
He's just getting you what you're saying.
Gloria, please be respectful.
Seriously.
Okay, uh, and Councilman Park seconded that.
Correct?
Yeah, I do. Okay, give a roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
What are we voting on here?
You're voting to sustain the, the charge of insubordination and impose a penalty of two days for every day of insubordination.
It's not sustaining the charges of, it's sustaining the findings, Emery.
No, it's sustaining the charge of insubordination.
So it's three hundred and forty-two days times two is six hundred and eighty-four days, right? That's what we're...
Yes, you're right. Thanks for doing the calculation. Uh, uh, s...
It was a while.
Okay. Excuse me, it's not, it's not...
We're voting.
You already heard all of this in closed.
I'm asking a question.
Okay, wait, wait. You already heard what they're asking, you already heard enclosed. Thank you.
Councilperson Zaverta?
No, for reasons I said in closed session.
E. Park?
No. For also reasons I said in closed session.
O.?
No. Ditto.
Ditto.
For the same reason.
Okay.
O'Shea?
Are you, excuse me, are you talking about deliberations? Okay. They mean deliberations, that must have been O'Shea, was it, yes? Sorry, Emery.
I said yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes.
I will be getting off the dais while you discuss me.
Okay, thank you.
Love you.
Okay.
Two fifty, I'll do it. Two fifty-one, authorizing the preparation and submission of disciplinary charges against Borough Clerk Lizette Duffy and submissions of same to Department of Community Affairs.
Okay. Uh, that title was amended during the caucus and discussed in caucus in open session between the mayor and council members. The title will be authorizing the preparation and service of disciplinary charges against the Borough Clerk and submission of same to the Department of Community Affairs, authorizing the mayor to sign those charges. Um, the mayor and council have a confidential working document itemizing the four different categories of charges, and, uh, in general, they have to do with the preparation of the minutes of October tenth, two thousand eighteen, draft minutes, and also having to do with recordings that Chi Chiapi made, which Ms. Duffy was a part of being recorded. So, the, um, resolution is strictly, it's gonna be your standard, you're authorizing the preparation and service of disciplinary charges, you're authorizing the mayor to sign it, you're authorizing submission of, this is where it's different, you're authorizing submission of same to the Department of Community Affairs. That's the substantive content of this motion. Someone needs to...
Turn the board up.
Grab it. Okay.
I, I have to point the board up.
So moved.
Sorry, hold on, I have to point the board up, discussion here. So, um, I don't... Someone's yelling out, and you're not following the rules. No, no. I mean, you and then you also, uh, I, nobody from the public, please. Please, no one from the public. You're right, Mr. De Gregorio, you shouldn't be yelling out either. I think, um, I don't agree with your rising issue, I think that the way you should write... I can't hear you, I'm sorry.
Okay, as we discussed in, in caucus. Go ahead, man. He didn't hear it.
Rice notice.
I, I said I don't agree with the logic of the...
Alright, that, that, right, that, that was asked and answered in, um...
I know, and I wasn't on the record why it was, why it should not be rising.
It's on the record from caucus, so you don't need to repeat it again.
You're right. We don't agree with the interpretation of the borough term.
Alright, can I have a motion?
So moved.
I'll let you do it.
Second.
Alright, so...
Hold on, I have to take this one.
I got it.
Okay, motion was...
Mark Park.
I'm sorry, Mark Park, second. William was the second?
Yeah.
Um, Councilman Zaverta?
Pass.
What's that mean, you're abstaining?
That means I said pass, I'll come back, come back to me.
Oh, now, I don't know the Roberts Rule on that, okay?
You could do that.
Okay, I don't know the Roberts Rule on that, it's fine, let me continue. Ellen Park?
Again, I disagree with your, uh, legal opinion as to the rice notice.
Okay.
Uh, additionally, the memorandum or memo that you sent over to the council members...
The working document.
The working document. Um, there are certain things in there that I also do not agree with, um, and again, that's, again, left for interpretation, um, and therefore I say no.
Councilwoman O.
No.
Councilwoman O'Shea?
Uh, yes, um, about yes.
Councilman Park?
Yes.
Councilman Woo?
Yes.
Councilman Zaverta?
Stand.
Motion passes, three to two. I'll just note two things for the record, I did discuss in caucus potential conflicts of interest, and, uh, no recusals were taken by any of the persons that I spoke about. In addition...
What just happened?
Okay, in addition, and Councilwoman, uh, Park, thank you for your commentary before casting your vote, I just want to, uh, make, make it clear from caucus, what I already said, which is this is just preferring charges, this council and this borough do not handle the charges, they go to the Department of Community Affairs, and we do not do any hearings, and we do not make any findings, and we do not make any decisions, the DCA does that. I want to make that clear to the members of the public, I know you guys, I'm...
Okay, uh, two fifty-two, higher full-time public works laborer.
Oh, wait, wait till Madam Clark comes back up.
Two fifty-two, higher full-time public works laborer, give a motion, please.
So moved.
Second.
Give a roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Two fifty-three, authorized change order number one and final payment to DNL paving for sewers resurfacing.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Two fifty-four, increased not-to-exceed amount for Jeffrey R. Serenian and Associates LLC. So moved.
Second.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Are we raising it, too?
Twenty thousand.
Raising it a couple. It says sixty-five.
Oh, no, no, oh, this one's how much?
It says twenty-five.
Twenty-five thousand.
Sixty-five.
Sixty-five?
Yeah, I, I just gave the history of all the, um, um, not-to exceed, so you'll see, um, in that resolution, maybe eighteen thirty-eight, eighteen one one one.
Started with twenty-five.
Okay, so this CPOs will have...
Right. So, yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Yes.
Okay, uh, thank you. Ordinances, uh, for two thousand eighteen public hearing, eighteen dash sixteen, ordinance to accept title and record deeds for two real properties.
Yes, in the open.
Good point.
Excuse me? New motion to open? So moved.
Second. All, I, I'm sorry, all favor of opening to the public? Okay, so if there's anyone from the public, I'm sorry, guys, were you in favor of that?
Yes.
All favor? Yeah, okay, thank, thank you. Uh, eighteen dash sixteen ordinance to accept title and record deeds for two real properties. If there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard just on that ordinance, uh, please, uh, raise your hand and come up to the microphone. Yes.
I would like, uh, Dave De Gregorio, one sixty-five Charlotte Place. Could someone explain to me what this all is about, this ordinance?
Uh, so, this ordinance is to accept the deeds to the two properties for the one hundred percent affordable housing project that the borough is espousing, and to record those deeds and certify the availability of funds from the Affordable Housing Fund pursuant to approval by the court. And you're on...
So how much is this going to cost the taxpayers?
Nothing.
Total? No, the purchase of this, of these properties?
Uh, uh, the, the purchase price is being paid from the Affordable Housing Trust Fund of the borough.
And how much is in that trust fund?
I don't know. You're asking the wrong questions, that's not what this ordinance does.
Well, does anyone know how much is in this trust fund?
The, um, the, uh, remember when I said you could only ask questions about this ordinance?
That's what I'm doing, it's, it's nothing to do with this.
You're actually asking for the ordinance from last month, actually, right now, so, um, we will answer all your questions, we just can't do it right now, just open it, we'll send that, everything you need.
Okay, what necessitated this whole ordinance to purchase this property?
Uh, that's, that's irrelevant here.
It's irrelevant?
That's irrelevant, I know...
I don't think it has anything to do...
I, I clearly understand what you're trying to do, but this is not relevant to this ordinance. So if there's anyone else who wants to ask questions about this ordinance, raise your hand, please, and I'll recognize you.
What property exactly is this? Is this the property, uh, that is, uh, over by the, uh, tennis courts, or is that the...
No, 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 no. Four eighty-two.
Four, four eighty-two Hudson Paris.
That's the one next door to Borough Hall, I forgot what the name is.
So it's a big build, is this a big building?
Sir, sir, the mayor and council previously approved the purchase of this by resolutions several months ago.
Yeah.
Okay? This is merely so I, conducting the closing, can accept the deeds, record them, and give them the money. That's all this ordinance is.
Okay, so what do you...
It's been approved months ago.
Good, so what, what do you want to do with this building? You're gonna knock it down?
Sir, that has nothing to do with this ordinance.
I would think it has everything to do with this ordinance.
Mayor, I would do the tone and thank you very much.
Okay, so it's recorded, but it has something that's in relation to this ordinance, I think as a taxpayer, everyone needs, has the right to know.
Okay, we're, 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 we're not, we're not connecting on this here. Look, um, what I'll do is I'll give you an opportunity to read it if you want and come back later, but right now, I want to see if there's anyone else that has questions about this ordinance.
That's fine, I'll come back later.
Well, actually, are you, are you done? You said that's fine, you're finished?
No, I didn't say, I said, I will read it.
It's getting late.
I know, it's getting late.
Alright, I think your, your time is up and you're not coming back. Uh, is there anybody else?
Well, you just said I could come back.
The history is there, twelve whereas clauses. The procedural history is there, thank you very much.
Okay, thanks, guys. Uh, anybody else?
All your questions are answered in that ordinance, thank you.
No further questions? Thank you. Have a motion to, is there anybody else in the public wishing to ask a question? Have a motion to close the public portion?
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Alright, have a motion to adopt this ordinance? Or approve this one?
Second.
Alright, have a roll call.
Councilperson Zaverta?
Yes.
E. Park?
Yes.
O.?
Yes.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Woo.
Okay, next ordinance is eighteen dash seventeen, ordinance to repeal ordinance number eighteen dash zero seven, that amended code chapter two dash thirteen to establish promotional procedures for position of chief of police. I'd like to open to the public. You have a motion to open to the public?
So moved. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Uh, if there's anyone from the public who wishes to be heard just on this ordinance, please raise your hand. Yes.
Danny Fair, forty-nine thirty-seven. So are you repealing the, the ordinance in its entirety? And then you're, you started with a new ordinance? You're not amending it obviously, so you're repealing that ordinance in its entirety?
That, that ordinance is being repealed.
In its entirety. Okay. Correct?
It's being repealed.
Aye.
Anybody else wishing to be heard? Yes, sir.
Dave De Gregorio, one sixty-five Charlotte Place. Councilman Zaverta, did you comment on this? Is this the thing that you commented on the last meeting? This, uh, ordinance? Or this?
Yeah, I, yeah, I think this is the same one.
This is stolen. So... So what's the, what is the exact purpose behind it? Can that be articulated? Why is, why is this necessary?
The, the ordinance becomes necessary as we passed it intending to have a promotional policy to make the next chief of police. Uh, we, we had, um, entertained that through part of the spring. We implemented it, uh, the PBA, uh, well, actually, I took some comments before we implemented it, um, we amended it, there was a litigation over it, we appeased everyone and then just cut the litigation short by agreeing to make changes. Uh, overall, we've gone out three times to ask for, uh, police officers who are eligible to apply for the position of police chief pursuant to this ordinance. to apply for the position of police chief pursuant to this ordinance. Uh, no one, no one applied, um...
Why do you think, why do you think?
Then, uh, let me finish, uh, then I, then I learned that no one applied because the PBA took a vote so that no one would apply, uh, which tells me a lot about how people who aren't eligible to be chief get to vote and affect the lives of people who would want to be chief. So rather than go down that rabbit hole, uh, I just think the best thing to do is to repeal it. Uh, the, the police department is off to a, a real good, uh, November, and, and the second half of October was very good as well, uh, except for a couple of things that happened over the past weekend, which I will get into right now. I, I just think Officer in Charge Hale is doing a fabulous job and, um...
Is Councilman Wu in charge? Is this, is he the liaison to the police department?
The, uh, the ordinance is the ordinance. Councilman Wu is the police commissioner, that has nothing to do with this ordinance. So if there's anything specific to the ordinance itself, please do comment, I'd love to hear what you have to say about it.
For me, uh, it would seem kind of more appropriate for Councilman Wu to make the recommendations on this.
Well, that's fine, uh, if, if Councilman Wu wishes...
Recommend the same, yeah.
You would recommend the same?
All of the details of this, David.
Well, Councilman Wu and I worked on this together, so I'm not sure what you're getting at there.
No, I'm not getting at anything, I'm just searching for information.
Fishing?
Not fishing, I'm searching for information. Fishing, you need to have some bait, I don't have bait. I'm, I am, I am searching for information.
Okay, that's proper there.
So Councilman Wu, um, is...
No more fishing analogies.
Uh, the, the police commissioner. Is the police, uh, union, the PBA, in favor of this? Yes or no? Is the police, uh, PBA in favor of this resolution?
Yes, they are, thank you.
Uh, I, no, no, I, I don't know, I don't think they... We never know what they're in favor of, it depends what they're told to do. I don't think they're in favor of the repeal, uh, honestly, but they're not here tonight, and quite frankly, uh...
Well, I, I would imagine...
Honestly, I, I bent over backwards to accommodate everyone who wanted to, to apply for this position. We did it all, and then on top of that, they took a vote that no one should apply for it. So that's just telling me to go pound sand, and we're going to repeal it. And the borough needs to be protected properly, with a properly functioning police department. My job is to find a way to do that, which I feel the best way to do that is to, right now, repeal this ordinance and, and, and get ready for the next chief. Public safety is of utmost importance, and I don't feel we're having it.
Do you think this ordinance is going to advance your relationship with the police department, or not?
My relationship with the police department is...
Or Councilman Wu's, because he's in charge.
Look, I, I'm hoping that our police department is as professional as I am, and that we, we're here to, to serve the public, to, to carry out the oath of our office, uh, and to make it a safe community. If they wish to join me in that, uh, then I'm happy to be with them. If they don't want to join me in that, then we'll have to find another way to do it, but quite frankly, Officer Hale has done a phenomenal job. He's, he's worked with Jamie, he's worked with Mark, uh, he's worked with us and the Borough Council. Uh, I'm, I'm very proud of what he's done, and, and more importantly, I, I should say that, um, in listening to the tapes, Officer Hale was the only officer on those tapes who actually said, "No chief, it's unlawful to do X, Y, and Z." He's the only officer on those tapes, which tells me that despite all the pressure that people are under in that police department, this, this is a righteous man who follows law and order, and, and that's the kind of person I want in the police department. But my relationship with the PBA will, is fine. My relationship with the chief, the next chief, is, is very important, because he's the one that has to set the tone for the PBA, okay? They answer to him, he answers to me.
And the mayor and council.
And the mayor and council.
See, no, what I, I'm, what I'm very confused about is that Councilman Wu is supposed to be in charge of the police department.
No, he's not in charge.
No, excuse me, I didn't mean in charge, excuse, thank you for correcting me. Councilman Wu is the liaison, the commissioner, you would say?
No, he's not a commissioner.
Yes, he is, he's the police commissioner.
He's, he's a public, yeah, so, I, I, I did call him that, and, and he's the chairperson of the Public Safety Committee.
So what I would like to know is, why has he not been doing that, negotiating, whatever? Why hasn't it fallen to the mayor to do all that?
This ordinance, now, you're, you're far adrift right now, because that ordinance doesn't deal with what you're talking about. I'm happy to talk to you after the meeting about that, but right now...
But it would seem to me that Councilman Wu wouldn't be the one who was to forge the relationship.
Here's the thing, here's the thing, your time is up.
It would seem to me that his...
Ten forty-nine, we want to get moving here.
Well, I know you want to get moving.
Anybody else from the public, or something to say about this ordinance, not about the color of the sky or anything else?
I don't think that you have been forthcoming as to why this ordinance is necessary, and I think you should have some, some complete honesty. I think that Councilman Wu should be doing his work.
He does, he does a great job, he does a great job. Do not be hitting Councilman Wu up here, because he does a great job, okay? Thank you.
I never said he didn't do a great job. I never said that.
That's what you're doing.
I never said that.
All right, anybody else?
You said that.
No, no, you said that. Go, that's enough. Yeah.
Uh, Carol McMorris, forty-ninth Summit Street.
Thank you.
First of all, I mean, I would assume, especially Gloria, and I'd noticed already because they were on the council from two thousand and eleven, you have a standing ordinance, first of all, I believe you should repeal this ordinance, um, and I think Councilman Wu is doing a fantastic job as the liaison to the police department. He's not a police commissioner, he's a liaison, um, chair of the police committee. You have a standing ordinance, I know everyone knows this already, or would hope you would know this already, it's on our website, it's under Administration, Police Department, and it covers appointments and promotions. The chief is an appointment, is not a promotion, it's an appointment. And the police committee makes the recommendation to the mayor and council for the appointment for chief. And for those of us that have been here, and I know that those in the audience have been here just as long as I have, um, it comes from the police, it comes from the police committee, and the police department has always been in favor of that ordinance, always. They have never said anything about that ordinance, and that's a standing ordinance right now. And that's what you would be reverting back to once this ordinance is repealed, and you're going back to the way it was always? Done.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else in the public? Okay, have a motion to close the public...
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, have a motion to approve this ordinance?
Point of, point of order, discussion?
Yeah.
So, you know, listening to, uh, some of the audience and, and you two mayor, as I spoke last time about this in the first reading, I mean, the whole idea of us sitting down and, and making that promotional ordinance was so that we didn't go back to the way it was before. That's what the flaw was, that's what you disagreed with, the way it was in the past.
It didn't work. It didn't work. We, we, two sides have to work with each other to make it work, and, and in, in our case...
I see where you're going.
No, in our case, in our case, it didn't work.
I don't like it, you're going back...
The PBA actually took a vote, the PBA actually took a vote to not participate in this, which defies logic, but it also hurts careers. I don't want people's careers hurt, I want advancement, okay?
So I'd like to finish my thoughts, and you guys could do whatever you want, but the logic was, when we all agreed to this ordinance, that it would be fair and give everyone, we opened it, we changed it, we did so many things, I was very pleased, we actually all worked together on this to do it, and you want to repeal it to go back to appointing someone, that's what was wrong with the process in the first place.
Ed, I think you voted no on the first one.
What?
I think you voted no on the first one.
I did vote no. Because you, I'm talking about the, the original one. No, I'm, I voted no on the first reading.
Oh, Ed, Ed, Ed.
First reading, I voted no on.
Ed, we, we got to get off this carousel.
You're right, I did, because I didn't agree with, and I did, I didn't agree, I agreed with the whole thing, but I didn't agree with not allowing, uh, to the, the rule to have the college degree. That's why I voted no.
Four years.
That, that's right, that's what I voted.
But then we fixed it.
Don't say I didn't agree with it, Ameri. Don't say I didn't agree, I agree with the substance of everything except for that, and that's why I voted no.
All right, it's, uh, it's getting late.
Don't worry about it.
Could I, have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second? All right, Mary Moon, William, second. Have a roll call, please.
Councilperson Aversa?
Going back to the way it was, no.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. It's repealed, yes.
Would I make, I like it.
Yes.
Make a motion?
Yeah.
Um, I'd like to make a motion, uh, to appoint William Wu, uh, council president for the remainder of the year.
Second. Yeah, that, I recognize that, that's fine, okay. Have a roll call.
Councilperson Aversa?
No.
E. Park?
No.
O.?
No.
O'Shea?
Yes.
M. Park?
Yes.
Wu?
Recused. No, you can vote yes, I can vote on this, yeah, you can vote on it.
I recuse, you don't have to tell him how to vote.
Yes.
I vote yes. Why, why so spiteful? We need a borough council president.
He, he recuses, and you correctly...
He, he thought, no, no, he's, he's allowed to vote.
Tell him how to vote.
No, he's allowed to vote.
And you said council president, you have to tell him how to vote?
Be kind, Gloria, oh, be kind, please. All right, for the, um, let, let's just get rid, let's just take care of this, appointment for unexpired...
Okay, the next, excuse me, the next two items, appointment for unexpired terms due to vacancy on land use board by the payers does not require advising consent. The council, in addition, appointment to fill the positions on the Affordable Housing Act of Hope by the mayor does not require the advising consent counter.
Okay, so, um, the first appointment, there's a vacancy on the land use board, uh, I'm appointing Carol, Carolina Calderon? Yeah, I'm moving her up, yeah.
For the unexpired term, correct?
Yes. And, um, for the ad hoc committee on affordable housing, um, we'll have Plan, Planning Board Chairperson Russell Perrino, Gloria O., Ellen Park, Jamie Barbario, our borough administrator, Debbie Sabari, and, and Carol McMorris. Now Debbie, I just want to make sure you understand, I, I think you live within two hundred feet, it's not going to be a problem for the ad hoc committee, but it might be an issue later, um, voting, so, um, somebody will have to analyze that. Somebody will have to analyze that, yeah. That's fine, just, thank you for doing that, everybody, I appreciate, uh, I, I think there's going to be, um...
Okay, please.
Okay.
I have, I have a question.
Take it outside if you have to, but I want to finish this meeting.
No waiting, sir.
All right, all right.
No waiting, okay?
Um, what I want to say is... Oh, we appointed seven. There's six, I'll go over them again just to make sure. Planning Board Chairperson, Borough Administrator, Gloria and, and Ellen, Debbie and, um, Carol.
That's right.
Okay, six. Sorry if I wasn't clear, but that, that's six. Um, I want to thank Mark for sitting here during leaf season, which is better than snow season, I think, right? All right, um, more predictable. Yeah, so, um, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, you should have flagged me earlier, I would have had you go early, I know you, you're busy. Did you want to add anything for your, um...
Move forward, move forward, it is leaf season, somebody's moving the streets longer than average, so...
Yeah, so, so there's been some great accomplishments this year. We got the gate up at Liddy Field, we're, we're getting a, a handicap parking up by Children's Park, uh, the pumping station on Roberts Road looks very nice again, thank you, um, I, I know it was a pain on that one, I apologize, but I just wanted to get that fixed up. It looks a lot better with the plantings, um, I know there's other accomplishments, but thank you very much, I appreciate everything you guys do. Uh, Jamie, did you have anything to say? All's good, all's well?
I guess we got to fix some vehicles tomorrow.
Tell them, get them out of there. Uh, let's have committee reports, uh, Councilman Aversa?
Well, I gave you a lot of good talking on one, but I don't have it.
You have a... You have a committee.
We have our last meeting, our next one, uh, just upcoming Monday, so I'll take nothing for, uh, for the hour, so I have nothing to worry about.
Councilwoman O.
Um, I'm going to have to follow up with that grant that we filed for the senior boss.
Councilwoman O'Shea, you're floating, uh...
I want to remind everybody about Veterans Day, um, come down to the park by West Bay View, every afternoon at eleven o'clock, um, and celebrate our veterans. I looked through the pictures from previous years, and very sad to say, so many of our World War II veterans have been passing away, uh, each year, so, uh, come down, celebrate those that are there, and, uh, join, join us, and I, uh, I spoke to, uh, the recreation director, Rashad, and asked him if we were having refreshments, he said he had to check with the mayor.
We should have refreshments.
In the community center afterwards.
Okay, the senior center or community center?
The community center.
Community center, okay.
Afterwards, okay, so hopefully, uh, I'll see everybody.